Order five one. Please sign this to the phone and put pledge of faith.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please, we have a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll make a motion to adopt it.
You have a second?
I have a second.
Motion to adjourn, second, please, the paper. So the poll. Uh, move on down to public comment, citizens may address counsel on items on the agenda or not on the agenda. Out of respect for counsel and others in attendance, please limit your comment to three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record for any public comments. Okay, during that, move on down to department reports, start with nine one one. And let's go here. All right, so, uh, fire. Fire now.
You have my report in your packet. Um, in addition, I met with, um, Charlie just briefly today and we'll be making some, uh, minimum adjustments to the, um, AP report coming up tomorrow forward, so you'll have a little bit more detail, um, after that. Um, beyond that, we are now doing all of our balancing and our GL administration house. So that will make your point, your reports a little bit more, um, timely and precise in the future. And if you have specific questions about how, what that looks like or how that's happening, please let me know. And other than that, just any questions you might have about our report.
Okay. Um, I would just like to bring up what I, what I brought up at the meeting so people are aware is that, um, the way it comes out in the meeting, like if you look at your divine delivery, they're both the same amount of money, they both all have the same date, it makes it appear like they're double, double paid. And so I'm asking that they be more clarified. And it was like when Jeff Marshall went to a training with another person, it comes both out to Jeff Marshall. So it looks like he got double paid for the motel. In, in the report, even though I know that that's not a fact though. So I just was asking for more clarification from that area.
I agree with you.
And just to let you know what that is, divine delivery, um, is a shipping service and half of it is water and half of it is sewer. And then since Jeff is the department head, he had the credit card to pay for the hotel room for his crew.
Right.
Yeah, so.
Okay. Um, Public Works.
I didn't know a whole lot going on, uh, you guys know I was ill for a couple of weeks for last month and, uh, my guy is a really, really did an excellent talk, taking a while I was gone and we got two week period, they have more water leaks than we've had in the last five years, they have twelve in two, two weeks, so. They had at least one every day and a couple of days they had doubles, so. They really stayed busy and did a great job while, while I was off. Um, we're, we're making some progress with the, you know, we've been having issues with our DOC geothermal system. And we had a gentleman come down, uh, and troubleshoot it and they came up with some, some ideas to fix it. And we kind of did a temporary fix on some of their stuff and it definitely is an improvement over what the way it was running. It's still not completely fixed, uh, but the fact that it does work better than it did before we worked on it tells me that the gentleman, uh, Brian Brown, that came over and assisted us is on the right track to getting the thing a hundred percent fixed, so. Uh, actually Scott and myself are gonna be doing some work with Brian Brown and get a better filter system and it'll be a long-term fix for the situation we have is is plugging in the, the heat exchanger and then the filters prior to the heat exchanger and after the heat exchanger, so, uh, I think we're gonna get, get that straightened out, uh, hopefully we get stuff coming pretty quick and, and get it completely fixed before winter really hits hard, but judging by my day, uh, but we're gonna, we're gonna attempt to get a cooperative deal on the repair between ourselves and, and DOC, so. Maybe they can shoulder some of the load for the financial impact, it's gonna be substantial, the repair will be substantial, but we've been getting by pretty good, uh, the last twenty years and, and just to a point where some money's gonna have to get spent on it, so.
Is it scale or is it actually like debris?
It, it's looks like rust, but it also has some other organic compounds that looks like dirt, like a combination of dirt and rust and the DOC went to the trouble of having it sent off and they said it's organic, it's a loop line that doesn't ever get much fresh water in it, so. Uh, if there's something in there, it just continues to circulate, uh, to flush that on the heat exchanger. So yeah, it's a, it's a combination of rust and organic materials, so. Um, the, the filter that we're looking at will be, there's a couple of different options, one, one way we can go, uh, we'll just flush it ourselves as often as we see fit. There's a little bit more expensive filter that, that might be a better option, uh, that, that senses when it's starting to get flushed out and flushes itself, so.
Are those like twenty thousand or thirty thousand?
Yeah. It looks like the filter, the flushes itself is gonna be about thirty-five thousand. But there's also a couple of other things going out there, we have some pumps that are not pumping at a hundred percent efficiency and so, uh, we're looking at possibly upgrading those pumps to a, a bit higher capacity so that even if they're not pumping at a hundred percent, uh, they'll still give the gallons per minute that they need up there, so. Um, putting the, putting the filter in is gonna help a lot and it'll reduce the required net head to pump the gallons up there, so, I don't know, we might be fixing it twice, but I would rather be safely sorry if we're gonna share some costs with the prison. We'll weigh down prices on pumps, uh, we're probably like at between fifteen and sixty thousand total, total, for the whole repair. But it's gonna be the permanent fix this time, we still don't wanna spend a lot of man hours going back and doing what we feel like we're doing now. We, we cleaned our heat exchanger three times per twelve month period the last few years and according to Brian Brown, we could probably take that down to once a year, and it may not even need to be cleaned once a year after we get, uh, the filter in place, so. So it's, it's a three-person job for two full days, so, you know, it took a lot of man hours, three times a year, so.
Okay, thank you. Now manager.
Okay. Um, so you notice I've got more people here from town hall, I am wanting them to attend so that when we start to get involved with our special projects and our bigger, our water treatment facility, that they're on here at town council to be able to address issues or questions that the public might have or that you might have, um, so that they can get more detailed about it. Um, and I think it's just gonna be more efficient that way as we move along to keep you guys informed of, and the public of what is happening with all the things that are coming up that the town will be involved with, so I'm asking everybody to be here to ask questions or come to a, uh, an agreement as to what you would like each of us to do.
Do you think they could introduce themselves?
Well, that is down here, um, under new business.
Oh, okay.
Otherwise I would. So, um, we've got a, a couple of things coming up, Public Works is gonna be heading over to do some trainings, which is gonna be great, we've got a couple, a lot of, uh, several new people and they're gonna be able to, um, start training and learning to go towards more certification, which we need to have for Public Works. So we have all of the certifications spread out more, but, uh, because currently right now Jeff is the one who holds all of our certifications for water and sewer. So we're sending people out to get, uh, trained and ready to test.
Each, each one of the guys have a specific either water or sewer, uh, nobody has cross-training in both and we'd like for everybody to have sewer and water training.
Yes, so we're not gimping along if somebody's sick.
Right, someone gets sick within weeks, so.
No names could be mentioned. Um, we have purchased smart meters. We've had them, got about a hundred and fifty of them and I've asked Jeff and Scott to find a place to start installing those so that we can get them installed and started working in the bugs workout. The eventual plan is to have everyone on smart meters. Um, I've also asked them to come up with a plan of how, what type of timeframe they're gonna do that in because if we do two hundred per year, we're gonna be in this for ten years. I'd like to shorten that a little bit, we can go out for grant money to help assist with the, with the cost of the smart meters and get them installed through our neighbor. Um, we've got a new website up. Um, it's wonderful, the intention of their website is to put absolutely everything that we have going on at town hall online. So you wanna know how much it's costing us from the flood park, it's right there online, you can download for your plans, you can download to depending what we're being quoted and what we're cutting checks for, so there's no question about what's happening. We'll be doing that as, as for the, um, water treatment facility, we'll be doing that for every project that we have. We also are gonna start putting on our website our monthly accounts payable, our budget, anything you can think of is going online. I just, um, I don't want there to be a question as to what we're up to. And all things can be asked for, we really wanna be able to share with the public what it is that we're doing. So that's all going on to the website. Um, we're also gonna be putting together more, uh, campaigns to get word out as we progress with different projects so that there's really no question as to what's coming next or what is going on. So we're getting close also to a final version for the BOD agreement with Red Rock. Um, that you can expect probably coming to council in November sometime to get final review and approval from you. Um, we, um, we need to, um, I'm also talking to Jeff and Scott. We have some, uh, aging systems, the Department of Corrections is just a really good example of a system that's going into a twenty, it's twenty years old. The other one that's starting to age is for the hospital and for the school. And then we've just, you know, Jeff's been on leaks for where, where is that, that had the seven leaks?
Oh, uh, South G Street.
We've got South G Street that's, um, aging and we've got all of F Street. Um, and we need to devise a plan on how we're gonna replace those and where we're gonna come up with the money to do that.
The whole art?
No, first of all, that's, that's all, yeah, that's all, uh, Florida.
Yeah.
The G Street, the episode is all, still white, that's gonna need to be replaced.
Same with South F, all the way from your house to South Ninth, it's all, then all, yeah, probably six, twelve leaks on F this year.
So you start looking at the manpower that he's spending fixing leaks, preparing the process.
The project are two hundred dollars a piece now, you know, but that's a pretty darn quickly.
So Jeff and I will be working on that and Michelle will work on finding the money for the place.
Yeah.
Would that be part of the, uh, new filtration system or not?
It depends, the RFP hasn't gone out for the engineering on that yet, so we're not a hundred percent sure exactly what that facility's gonna cost us. And we haven't gotten the contract from business organ yet to, and that, that will give us our parameters of what that money can be spent on. Uh, I'm pretty sure that there's gonna be some money in that for infrastructure, but depending on the cost of the actual facility itself, that'll dictate how much money we have left to put towards these water mains.
So the amount of leaks that we're having to me are just little messages from our pipes that it's time. Like memo to us, we're getting a lot more frequently, they're happening in the same area and so we need to address that. And so I'm addressing it and if we need to go out and, and supplement the costs with grant money, then we need to have a plan to do that, cause like you just can't just on a dime go out saying, I need five hundred thousand dollars or whatever, but we need to have that all done. And, um, finally, I have two dates that, um, I'd like to make sure everybody is aware of. Uh, next, the town council's gonna be a big one, it's gonna be awesome. Um, I'm having the city managers from John Day and Burns come with here and we will be presenting, um, uh, the tri-cities that we're wanting to, uh, take before the council and what that looks like and dollars and the cents and what that really encompasses and how it looks, so we will be having that, I'm planning on having it at the EMS just in case we have overflow. Um, but it's really exciting, we'll also be, um, addressing our urban renewal area plan also and um, how we are going to be mirroring that success that John Day's having down here. Um, also, just internally, on the twenty-seventh, we've got a consultant coming to help us with all of our DEQ reports, we've got several coming up, we've got year end, we've got net DMR, water rights, and she's gonna come and audit the reporting that we need to do, the reporting that we may have missed, year-end stuff, and she's gonna help us along to make sure that we're doing all the right stuff. So that's gonna be the day following, um, council. And I think that should keep us busy for a while. But well, at least for two weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right, let's move on down to old business. South, South Third Street stop sign installation, I went down, drove both directions. And it's actually, I don't know why it's stop sign on South Third.
Yeah, I think we're talking about speed signs.
Speed signs, yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, speed signs.
Cause it was gonna be on stop signs, it would probably be in regards to the one on South Sixth.
Sixth, so it's, yeah.
And if we have the posts, say, and we're just waiting for the four-way sign.
Yeah. Anyway, those signs.
By the school, right.
In my defense, it did state on old business, cause I copied and pasted it.
Um, I really faded, very sad. The one that really shocked me is one that's on the southeast side of the football field is right at the school. I feel that sign should be pushed back down the street further. It doesn't do you any good right at school when you drive up and you're right at the school. I think it should be pushed down further.
Does it say twenty or does it say twenty-five?
Um, what I'd like to see, and what they're kinda spending is the ones that flash at it.
We'll be working on all of you.
Does it, like a fluorescent speed zone sign or something, something bright? That people would notice.
We talked about that at the last meeting I was at, we were not sure if they were gonna say twenty or if they're gonna say twenty-five.
Well, right now they say twenty-five, twenty if kids are present.
Yeah.
Is what the one says, the other one doesn't say that.
Right.
But I think they should be twenty all the time, because otherwise it's, you know, people get in the habit of one and then.
Twenty-five means thirty-five.
They don't always. Or sporting events going on and think, oh shit.
So I would actually have a, my promotion to put new signs up at say twenty instead of twenty-five.
How, how much are signs?
A hundred dollar, a hundred and twenty-five dollar.
Thank you, I just didn't want it to be a thousand.
No. The flashing ones are, are sixteen hundred.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
They, they have some really nice solar ones I was just looking at.
Yeah, that's the one I was thinking of.
Sixteen hundred dollars, yeah.
It's also on age, by the middle school.
People speed all over in that.
Yeah.
Jesus, drive out there, it's like a traffic.
The parking lot of the schooling system.
Well, also on, uh, Second Street, by the gym. That's been racetrack too, I've been getting length on that. So you're looking at five, six signs?
Let's say twenty.
Yeah.
Do they have to say twenty when children are present or can they just say twenty?
I'd just go with twenty.
I'm just not sure what the legal. Well, you can change it, you just have to put up, uh, notification, put it in paper that the speed limit's being changed, cause it's residential and they'll have to be white and black instead of, uh, yellow and black. For residential, it's twenty-five right now. Right, you can lower it as long as the council approves it, you know, it's posted in, you know. But does that mean that every residential town? No, you can do, you can do it in the script, yep, they just have to make sure that they're white and black, because that's regulatory and not yellow and black. Cause the fluorescent green ones are what we put up around the school recently. Yeah, cause those are schools own signs, but for, to be a regulatory permanent, it has to be white and black. So we want white and black, want white and black. You know, as, as ten, the next regulatory is white and black, they can enforce that all the time.
Around all the schools shouldn't be twenty.
The posts cost more than the signs do, the posts and the bases for the posts are two hundred and fifty dollars and then the signs about a hundred and twenty.
You know what's great about that?
Nope.
Is there, there's two signs between the football field and the baseball fields that are on the, this side closest to the football field? Where the little teeny baby signs are up there, nothing, there are sun bleeds, you can take those two both. Wow, that's a great idea.
Same ones that are already there, yeah.
Cause they're not saying anything.
Sure.
That's five hundred dollars, you're welcome.
Oh, anyway, what a sound thing.
That's a good idea.
I'll maybe make a motion to use existing posts if you can and put twenty miles an hour down for the schools.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Is it just right at the schools or is it like a block or two away from the school?
Some of them are about a block.
I mean, I'm just saying the G Street, those kids walk to the school about a half a time and they're flying down that street, yeah.
I think it should be two blocks either side of the school.
Well, let's, let's just say we'll keep to purchase as many signs as needed.
I really, I really like the, I really like the flash green signs on the school area, I mean, we just can't get away with those, but they really are much more noticeable. They are, but they're, when you come to, when it comes to regulatory, it has to be white and black, yeah. I think that's the only way that, um, the sheriff's department was teaching really enforce it.
How close to the school, is it two blocks or just on the school block?
Well, if they're, if they're changing it to a permanent twenty miles an hour, they have to be regulatory signs. Because it's not just because of the school, that's the permanent speed limit for that street. So it has to be a regulatory sign. If it's a school zone, you can use the yellow, or the fluorescent green and black.
Maybe get half and half.
Because it's only for certain hours of the day where white children are present, then you can use the green and, the fluorescent green and black. But if it's regulatory and you're gonna lower that speed limit down twenty miles an hour, it has to be regulatory sign.
I think you better just lower it all the time.
I think it should be clear, cause if there's always a football game going on or the kids are playing at the school or.
Soccer practice, usually all the time. I'll rescind my motion.
So all that just being said?
No.
Fix handies.
Gotcha.
Fix handies.
There are as many signs as needed.
Okay.
You have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion made in second, fill in the paper.
All right.
All right. Okay. All right, now the big one. I'm gonna vote for council president. Somebody needs to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion for Sandy to be council president.
I'll second that.
Motion made in second? Any other nominations? During that? Those in favor for Sandy?
All right.
Okay, Sandy, you're back on the board.
What's gonna be, sorry.
All right. Introduction, uh, Sheila Schubel and Scott Langham, Michelle, you wanna pick up?
I would love to do that, I would like to introduce a few of our new staff. Um, Scott Langham, he will be heading up our special projects, which is, um, lots of things, but the main priority for him is to get our water treatment facility out of the ground and finished, so, um, we have our work session tomorrow to go over the RFP, um, just to make sure it has everything in it council wants to have in there and then it will go out to bid on October eighteenth, which is the next, next Monday. So that we can get our engineering plans and so that he can start to get to work, whatever is decided, so that we have the winter to get ready to have people see that there's motion happening. He's also gonna take over some of the push-up from Jeff Marshall, seems good. Um, there's a more equally yoked, um, division of what needs to happen to public works. So, and then we have Sheila Schubel, she is going to interface between Jeff and Scott. She's also gonna be communications, web development, um, taking care of all of the hearing recording for the EQ. Um, and what other stuff I need her to do. And they are both wonderful additions to our team.
Okay, welcome aboard. All right, let's move on down. Zone change funding file seven sixty-nine road dimples to commercial for Daryl Durbin. I have a hearing procedure here I have to read. My name is Ray Turner, I am presiding off official to this hearing. What? Offload is inspired by ORF chapters one nine seven and two two seven by Lakeview ordinance number seven eighty-two known as signing ordinance and specifically the development code which establishes rules for public hearings. The criteria for this subject application are set forth in the staff report. Persons participating in tonight's hearing must direct their testimony, arguments and evidence toward the criteria identified in the staff report or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or land use regulations which the person believes apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue, a faulty statement or event sufficient to order the commission and the party an opportunity to respond to the issue will likely prelude appeal of the land use board of appeals on that issue and failure to raise constitutional and other issues will likely include appeal on those issues. The record for the subject application includes all materials in the packet prepared for tonight's hearing plus additional timely viral written testimony and any oral testimony made during this evening's proceeding. So as long as order is maintained, I will conduct this hearing. So as long as order is maintained, I will conduct this hearing informally and substantially satisfied. And each one of us have a packet and we have two of them tonight. So.
Ray, Jay Harland is on the screen as well, he is your planner.
Hi Jay, thank you for joining. Um. The commission, if they have any export they contact or disclose. Or have actual potential conflict of interest to disclose. Uh, we have staff has a report here for us to claim the basics. Of the proposal within files discussed the criteria. Um, town attorney will address the commission with any comments. The applicant who has burden of proof of his and his or her representative will make an introductory statement. And address the criteria to explain why the proposal or other relief should be granted. Do you have anything to add to this, Daryl?
Um, he's he's speaking for you.
Okay.
Daryl, speak for me. Uh, this was a straightforward zone change uh on the property as indicated in your in your packet. Change it to uh commercial use, so Mr. Jarvis could develop the property as as a commercial use. It's located on highway three ninety-five directly across from the uh motel. Um, and other commercial use zones, actually we have another zone change uh right after this one concerning the property direct across the street. Um, this was presented to the planning commission, uh the applicant met the burden approved to uh. Change this zone and it was approved by the planning commission, so um we'll answer any questions. Don't really have much to add, do you wanna add anything?
No. Okay.
I don't.
What's the other joint property, Joe?
Across the street.
Which direction?
Southeast.
It's good.
Southwest.
Behind the coffee shop.
Behind the coffee shop. It's a totally separate application.
Behind the duplex.
Oh, behind it, that's a big corner, a big property. Little apartment, yeah.
Right, person uh who are further support the application, anybody wanna speak?
Very great, I'd just like to say that property's in all but on paper has been a commercial property for at least twenty years. Uh, it's had a business run out of it, it's had its inventory sitting there and so as far as. Any change in the neighborhood, it's cleaned up a lot better than it ever was, it'd just be a good addition to the town.
Okay, cool.
Was there name and address for the record?
Very great.
Address?
Ninety-three seven thirty-two highway one forty.
Thank you.
This is the property down by the motel, right?
Yeah, across the street from the motel. Yeah, right next to my house. East side of the highway.
Sorry, man.
All right.
Planning commission said okay.
Yeah, correct.
So. So what planning commission did was make a re- recommendation and if you read that in the the. Sec- the staff report that was amended, it's just a small paragraph, it's stating that it was amended um to basically suggest to you that there they have no objections to it. And they are just waiting for.
For a commercial property.
Approval from the council.
Yeah, the the planning commission recommended for to that the council approved the requested plan amendment. Um, staff does have one thing to add, uh which is the um we got at the planning commission, kind of dawn near the last minute, got a an email. Uh, that wasn't clear to us what whether it was supposed to, which record it was supposed to go into, cause we had similar matters. After email correspondence with Fair Housing Council and Gina Fair Housing Council, she clarified it was supposed to be in the Jarvis. Uh, application, the nature of that email was uh she was saying that additional goaltend findings need to be provided. Staff has reviewed these comments, uh staff does not agree with those comments, the original. Uh, findings addressing statewide planning goaltend explain that there are adequate supplies of commercial and residential lands in this in the town and therefore. Uh, changes in the in a point three acre parcel from one category to the other would not have a meaningful effect. On the plan designations and uh zoning designation citywide, so staff cannot agree with um the comments raised by the Fair Housing Council, but we wanted to get that on record, thank you.
Mr. Jarvis, this is this county attorney, um that is a stat- that is almost a stop comment that the Fair Housing Council makes in most applications of residential properties, is that correct? Pretty common for them to do that.
Uh, it's common around the state and I don't know why they do that.
So, there's a thing called boilerplate.
I don't wanna say more than that.
Right. So there is a thing called the boilerplate comment that, I mean, there is, and he's adequately addressed what is there, but it is kind of a generic type of thing they tend to do. It applies more in some subjects than others, but his characterization, I think adequately addresses that particular comment, but again, it's your guys' decision.
So is access gonna be off of the highway or off of?
Sixth street.
Off to six, okay.
I was wondering if ODOT was. Probably not.
Uh, they weren't asked, they don't really need that.
Right, it's a you guys is off not off the highway.
Okay, so that's the entrance and the exit is off of sixth street?
Yeah.
Um, is there anybody in the audience who oppose the application?
I've spoken several times, Bruce Beamen, the joint appropriate of the north, I've spoken to the planning commission several times, but I have no further comment, I'll leave it in your copy in hands.
Okay. Any interested public agencies or utilities have any comments?
O- ODOT was notified and had no comment.
Yeah, now we're going down through this, looks like everything else has pretty much been answered. So. I think right now what I need is a. A motion made by the council?
You need to close the hear- close the hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I do, you're right, so as as of this time, I'm closing the hearing. And we'll go back to council.
I'll make a motion, I will revoke uh the planning commission that application number seven sixty-nine approving the change to the comprehensive plan amendment. From residential to commercial and the zoning map amendment from R dash one to C C dash A C.
Motion made in second, in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carried. All right, let's go down to planning file seven seven zero. Application for Garrett Garrett Childers.
So you'll have to start back at the beginning one.
What?
You'll have to start at the.
Just again?
Well, you have to go, you have to follow procedure, sorry.
So I follow procedure, what am I gonna have? All right, let's see.
There.
You guys make this so easy.
Save Jay for it.
No, thank the Oregon legislature.
Okay, well, act the assignment through you have a good basis, sucker.
All right, so.
Thank you, Carol.
You're welcome.
On this one here, if anybody has to exportate contact or disclose or have actual potential conflict or interest to disclose.
Is this for the same property?
No.
This is Garrett Childers'.
Just north of the coffee shop, across the street.
Right there by the coffee shop, it's back in behind the.
South.
Outside of apartments.
Oh, okay, got you.
It's across the street from the property we were just talking about, because duplexes there.
Got it. Got it.
Yeah.
South of the coffee shop, this dollar.
All right.
It's.
You want to report in your file? You're.
I think it's.
Town attorney have any, will add just any commission with any comments, do you have any comments?
I appreciate every police staff report, I agree with the um planning commission's decision as far as from a legal basis and and that this is a plausible initial proceeding, I don't have anything else. Um, and legal criteria are met, if the council decides that's the direction they wanna go, they have that authority to go that direction.
Daryl, are you representing Garrett?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I was trying to find out, who who here is representing you?
And so is Buddy.
Both of them.
Okay.
I'm just, I got Daryl back.
Okay.
Is that where you're sitting?
Will this be highly visible from the street?
From what I've, I drove by and looked at it, really not, it sits in behind.
Okay.
And if you look in your packet. There is a.
Schematic there.
Drawing.
And keep in mind that Garrett owns.
The very last two pages, look at it.
Garrett owns that property also and his sister owns the property, the coffee shop.
What were you doing that, just upgrading it?
Yeah, I think it's, I didn't look at it, but storage or.
Is it, what is going to be put on the property here, couldn't answer that question.
Yeah. He his plan was a few, but he can expand on that, his plan was a few um high-grade RV spots. He prevented or presented information to the planning commission on what they would look like. They're they're long-term stay ones, um I think there was only six that we had in there, I mean.
Six spaces?
Yeah.
Six spaces like for winter storage for your RV or.
Yeah.
Well, no, it's.
Summer storage if you want.
Well, I think it's more than storage, it's.
It'll be an RV, it'll be an RV park that they can come in for monthly rentals or weekly rentals or anything like that.
Oh, okay, okay, I was thinking um a storage. You know, where you just put it for the winter, but you're talking about camping.
Camp, but well.
Or pulling in and staying overnight.
Well, we're not really gonna offer overnight services, no, we don't want uh one for traffic and and uh two, we did, we're trying to make this park a little bit different than the rest of them. It's gonna be, it's gonna be pretty nice.
Thank you.
Okay. They have to kind of have burden of proof, I take it, representative make a statement. You guys have already done that, person uh present supports the application? Turn none. Nobody here to oppose it?
Um, Buddy would like to speak.
I'm good.
Oh, okay. I thought you wanted to.
That's what I wanted to tell us about.
He just did.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
Things like everything else, just write on down, Jay, you have anything else to add to this?
Uh, the only thing that I have to add to this is uh just to remind the commission, you were talking about the specific designs. Um, and that is the intent, I think, that's what the applicant said, to do this RV park, but I would remind you, this is a plan amendment. And zone change and the the specific uses would be any of the uses that are allowed in the commercial zone um after the map change, so um your decision should be based on. Uh, the sort of the changing of the color of map as opposed to a specific theme of the plan.
Okay. Council? I need motion on this?
Close the meeting.
Close the meeting.
Close the meeting.
Oh, I gotta close the meeting, I'm sorry, now we're going back, council.
I will revoke on planning commission application number seven seventy, approving the change to comprehensive plan amendment from residential to commercial and the zoning map amendment from R one to C C dash A C.
I'll second that.
Motion made in second, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Jay, motion carried. All right. All right.
Thank you.
It's good seeing everybody, thanks guys.
See you later.
Bye.
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 All right, we have two groups for here.
Bye, thanks for coming.
Cool.
So glad we got you.
See you later.
Eleven twenty-one in the matter of making the budget amendment. We're not done. Um, in the matter of making the budget amendment, we review at the end of ninety-one oh one.
So the town has a CDO, uh Washington Federal, that is not garnering a lot of interest, so. And. Oh, this is you, okay, okay, uh we got our yearly audit back from the USDA to make sure that we were in compliance for our USDA loan. Um, there were a number of items that we're going to need to adjust or amend or correct to make that happen. Um, both of the resolutions, um eleven twenty-one and eleven twenty-two are related to that. Um, the requirement of the loan is that we have a one-year payment held in reserve. Um, someone in the past at town hall, um assumed that meant we had to have a CD or a savings account or something like that with that dollar amount in it. What it actually meant was that we needed to have in our budget a reserve of the amount of that loan payment. So that um in order to have a balanced budget, you have to have not only the loan payment, but also the reserve amount showing. So what this does is it moves the amount of that reserve from contingency into a designated reserve so that the USDA can see it when they audit. Any questions?
Is is ninety-one oh one uh loan for the the last geothermal expansion?
No, this is that Goldmore Terrace loan for the water expansions. We already have a reserve account.
Goldmore.
Goldmore Terrace.
Oh, we, the the loan that we assumed from them at the time.
Right, and then we already have a reserve account for the geothermal, that was already in place.
Okay, so actually these two are basically the same?
Well, it's pertaining to the same.
No. It's a same, it's pertaining to the same issue, we need to do the resolution separately, we need to approve this separately, I can talk about both of them together and not just.
All right.
I'll make I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution of eleven forty-one.
I'll second.
Motion made in second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, let's move on to the resolution eleven twenty-two.
No, there's, I have, I don't know, there's two-page one and the one-page one?
Um, the one-page one was the draft, the two-page one was the attorney's final, there's.
Oh, okay, so that's, no, but, all right, thank you.
Okay, and then the second one, the eleven twenty-two, is basically the one-year payment was in a CD at an obscenely low amount of interest. It comes up for renewal on the twenty-third of this month and so we have seven days to close it and move it to the L G P I. So this is your permission for us to close that twenty thousand dollar CD and move the funds over into investment instruments that will bring us more income.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution of eleven forty-two, close the CD of Washington.
I'll second.
Motion made in second, um uh resolution eleven twenty-two, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
What will we give for interest on that, or else you like half a percent or something?
Uh, point zero two, so.
Okay. Yeah.
Twenty, uh twenty of a percent.
Right, got you.
Okay. Um, Peter Brewer. Air quality?
He must be on today, so if you guys could just read up on this and then go, we'll go over it at a a later date.
Okay, who who on the council is on the air quality?
Um.
No, the we've.
I'll have to look and switch. I'll have to look and switch things over because I have to fix that and then send it out, so I'll have that done tomorrow and sent out to everybody.
Okay. Because I know, I'm, nobody knows who's doing.
I'm on the website.
Huh? Okay.
Yeah, it's there, but I need to update it and get it to you guys too.
Okay, on your, we'll see an informational town council meeting and work session tomorrow will be on the R S P water treatment facility. Then on October twentieth, we'll do the dog ordinance. And then the twenty-sixth, we'll have a regular session.
Yeah, that one will be at the EMS building.
That'll be a long one?
At the EMS building.
At the EMS building?
On the twenty-sixth?
Yep.
Okay. Make sure we hit that up.
We did, it's been, it's on the website too. And we posted on Facebook and I'll have it posted on the radio.
All right.
All right, let's move on down.
Can you call me?
Can I ask what time is it?
I will.
Work session or floor or uh.
Hey, move on down to Hollywood Gate Water and Sewer Account.
I have all of our money due past due down to a hundred and ten thousand.
How many?
A hundred and ten thousand.
Wow, nice job.
So, and I have created a contract for accounts that are below five hundred dollars um. Where they can make payment arrangements where they pay their current bill plus pay a certain amount a month. If they miss one month, they're automatically shut off without further notice. Then they have to pay their full bill plus a thirty-dollar reconnect fee and before they can have their water turned back on. So. I'm getting, now this is the council.
Whenever you need to approve it, I'll.
No, I I wanted Holly to tell you what she's been up to because really this is a monumentally huge success for for us as a town. Because we've now eliminated so much and we're starting to be able to manage current information instead of this runaway train.
When I first started a year ago, our debt for water and sewer is at three hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. So I have taken it from that for our past two accounts to a hundred and ten thousand in a year.
Awesome.
Great, great, awesome job.
And didn't you say you knew the Viper grant first and kind of kind of lowered the.
Yes, that will be coming shortly, um because there's a program to help um low-income families. Um but we need to present it to you in a different way than right now. But yes, it's coming. Which will be very helpful. I mean, we can just let accounts go, I mean, it takes a long time to get up to two thousand dollars. But a really long time, so it's just getting rid of all of that residual history and now we can tell you and we can work more effectively and efficiently. And there's something that I've asked Holly to do and she has just done an outstanding job and I felt like it was more for her to bring the council to tell you. Um because she's in it every single day, so.
Thank you.
And we have had to write off about a hundred thousand in sewer bills because there's nothing we can do. We can't shut off sewer and stuff. And so that's where this program is gonna come in and help to where we can collect more on the sewer than the water.
Are some of the properties just vacant?
Um a lot of properties are vacant. A lot of people have just up in or can't afford to pay them.
Still live there?
They're still in there. Um that this program is gonna help a lot, so.
Sewer-only accounts are are very difficult to collect on for, that's a big problem that a lot of towns are having. If they have sewer-only, you don't have much leverage because it's a health issue that can shut them off. You can't dig it up and.
Right.
Turn it off, so it's uh, you know, it's very limited. Some of the people don't live, they don't own the property that they live in. And so, you know, you can't put a lien against the property because you'd be reeling somebody that owns the property rather than you living there.
I'd be curious to know, like Burns and John Day, well, how much in arrears they are.
I can check for you if you'd like.
Well, just out of curiosity, see if we're there to say, oh, we are.
Well, thank you, Holly.
Yep.
Keep up good work. Whole staff keep up good work. Things are uh looking good.
Oh, yeah, so I have a gentleman that um four eight oh five repair is up on South F Street. And he is, his meter is set up kind of weird.
Can I get a little bit of background on that?
Yeah, see.
Yeah, so so his property is actually on E Street and his water meter is on H. And so what happened is way back in the old days, and that's outside of the city limits, so there were no rules out there, you know, forty years ago when that was done. But the same person owned the house. This water line runs from F Street up and hits a house and then ran across the alley to clear over to E Street to feed that old shop over there. So at some point, the house was sold off, and so then they dug up the water line right there and put a meter in for the house. So he could have a read and this would have a read also. Well, it still runs through this first meter, so. And historically, it was set up in the computer where the computer automatically deducted the usage from the second house from the first. So with it being out there, we're not even supposed to be working on it. It's supposed to be done by the homeowners or the landowners, but it's a a weird situation because now it's owned by two separate people. They didn't address the situation when it happened. Well, then some time ago, maybe a year and a half ago, fourteen months ago, the computer stopped seeing it as a deduct meter. And so four eight oh five repair has been paying his water bill plus his neighbor's water bill that runs through his meter, then through the neighbor's meter. We're able to go back and track it down and see how much over he paid. And uh we discounted him almost three hundred dollars, but now he feels, and after looking at it myself, I think he does have some more coming, but. We're just gonna have to bite the bullet, go down there and fix the situation and get both of them. So we can, we can make it where both meters don't run through his his metering border, but what we can't do is address the situation where that meter line, the long meter runs across private property and across an alley in the county. Now to another property, so.
So he was supposed to come to the meeting tonight and he didn't, but he's claiming that we owe him at least four years back. But I went and looked at all of his accounts and he actually didn't move into this property until April of two thousand twenty. So he moved out of it in January of two thousand twenty, moved into another shop on Fourth Street and then moved back into this in April of two thousand twenty. So the computer in two thousand twenty was collect or was calculating it right for a couple of months. And then it just all of a sudden stopped calculating it, but there was a couple payment adjustments made on his account. And then this last month, um Jeff went in and calculated the meter right, so he didn't get charged.
Physically deducted the user from the second meter from his, so it was accurate last month.
Right, but he's claiming we owe him about eighteen hundred to two thousand dollars for four years.
Oh, that's what. See, when I spoke to him, he he thought we owed him another two hundred dollars.
No, when I talked to him, he's he's claiming we owe him four years back. So I printed out all of his bills stating, no, we don't owe him that much. So.
We'll have him in and talk it over.
But he was supposed to come in and talk to council tonight. He never showed up, so.
So if we ever put into smart ears, will that fix the issue?
I don't believe so because it's gotta go through his meter first to get to the house. It's off to the right to their meter.
No. Two will have to be physically separated each other, yeah, separated, yeah.
And how are you gonna do that when he has living quarters on there now?
Well, this is gonna be done over on F Street, you know, five hundred feet from his property.
Okay. I was just curious.
Yeah.
Because now he has a house li- on there, a trailer house.
Yeah.
And he's actually living in it now and has been since June.
Yeah, well, we'll have an accurate account of how much water he uses.
And I'm just wondering how much is the council willing to or is the council willing to um do some kind of a.
Negotiation.
Negotiation.
Sounds like he's gonna go back.
What do you think?
He he owes a minimum for the entire time he's been there. I didn't realize he'd been in there. I thought he'd only been in there like, he says he's been paying a water bill for four years?
No, he's only been paying it since April of two thousand twenty.
Well, how can we owe him for four years if he's only been there for a year and a half?
That's, that's what he's claiming, but.
So I I would.
But your your research shows that we don't really own.
If we were being, I would be willing to. Not if you're going to back to a minimum for the entire time he's been there.
Correct.
Just since two twenty.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, does that make sense to you, Holly?
Yeah, so his his bill should only be um forty-three eighty.
Per month?
Per month, or yeah, forty-three eighty a month. So.
Pretty easy enough to figure out.
It's a job, yeah.
Yes, however, to throw a wrench in it all, that's for residential. If he's, that's a commercial property, correct? That's correct.
Yeah.
But I mean, he's not.
So.
It's it's only a few dollars lower for commercial.
Yeah.
Well, so the reason I I wanted to bring this up at council is because it's got multi-layer issues. One, there's a discrepancy of how much he's wanting, you know, two hundred dollars compared to twelve hundred is a huge gap. And that's an an easy fix. We can do that. It's not, that's not the big deal. The bigger issue is that there's been a Band-Aid on this conundrum for a long time. Which that part needs to get fixed and.
At the owner's expense.
That's the question. So I I'm trying to solve two problems. I'm bringing this to help me solve two problems that are are escalated. So he he's upset, understandably so. Our records are defer- are different than his and we've got the genesis of the problem to to fix and at what cost and who does it and when can we do it and do we have time to do it? And and how are we gonna solve this bigger picture?
Well, weren't you gonna charge some people ten thousand dollars for a water meter, like there in Stewart?
That was to put a water man in on the street.
Yeah, well, are we gonna do that over here?
No.
It's already there.
No, there's a, there's a man on F Street. He really doesn't qualify for water where he's at, but it was done in the past. It's grandfathered in and there's two dozen of them down there in the south end with that same situation, so.
So would the.
Two thousand people?
Mm-hmm.
At least.
Well, it's a mess. So would the cost be?
Then it just ran a one-inch line five hundred feet down an alley to their house.
A one-inch line?
Yep. So.
We did that. We did?
No, we never did it. It was all done by by the homeowners. Their well would go bad. They would talk to forty-five years ago whoever was down here. I got no water. I need a real line down there.
Oh, so.
Down the alley. And now the line in the alley leaks and and they don't have a right of way for it and, you know.
So how many, is it, is, there's three meters there or two?
There are two that are affected.
There's his and then two other ones that go off of his or just only one other meter that goes off of his?
That would go. There's one, there's at least one that goes off of his because I went down and turned the water on at the little house on the way to his shop. And it definitely went through his meter as well as the one through the house, so.
So then would the cost for him to do it would be split with the other person because is there a water meter that's going through his water meter?
It was done by a person that owned both properties to begin with.
Right.
And he only had one meter and had fed both properties. Then he sold the house, so then the city went back and put a meter after the T to this house. It's a mess down there, you know, and it's uh, it's not really our responsibility, but about the easiest we can get off is probably to to separate the two. Run run lines to each of them. You know, we can spend the day down there and get that done. But that still doesn't fix his long-term problem because he, from the meter, he runs across private property and across the county alley and then onto his own property. So, you know, if he has problems later on with that line, then he's gonna have to go back, but that's not our fight. That's gonna be between him and whoever the the other property owners are.
Well, then normally from the meter to the property is the property owner?
Correct.
And then from the meter in the street is ours.
Yeah, but it's outside the city limits. It's all just responsibility.
Where's the.
But you're just suggesting that we solve property by putting the line in?
Could the other property owner just flip that off if he wanted?
But I guess I look at it.
Could the other property be?
Fine.
He's no more at fault than than the customer in question.
Okay.
It's a lea- it's a legal mess. There's probably been adverse possession easements. I mean, it's just, but again, it's the property owners' problems down there to get those issues that.
We can spend a few hundred dollars and remedy the situation where it's no longer gonna be a billing nightmare. And then whatever he does in the future to maintain that line.
So, but what happens if you dig into it and the line's not good and then you gotta, you're.
Well, the the main is only about four feet from his meter and then the second meter is only about four feet from there, so that's total, you know, it's bigger than table. We can fix everything.
I bet there's not even an easement down there. I bet they just ran a line.
Exactly, because the county would have required some kind of.
Right, through the road, there's not an easement.
There's no easement.
But the fact it's been used so long and it was done without permission could be an adverse possession situation, no prescriptive easement, you know, like driving across some of these property for long enough.
Well, it's no grandfather thing. Everybody says that, but there's, when it comes right down to it, it's not a grandfather thing.
Well, your suggestion is to go ahead and split them?
Yes.
Yeah.
At our expense.
Right.
And and knock his bill back to a minimum because he has no yard down there. He doesn't use a great deal of water.
Right, he's a forty-three dollar guy.
Right, so so we could, we could go down there and we'd spend four or five hours and fix the situation, spend a few hundred dollars. And then then at least it's not a billing nightmare for Holly. Is he on the sewer as well? He's on the sewer as well.
I would, I would just say, rather say you do that than.
Right.
The way it's going now, it's a, it's a nightmare.
Yeah.
Get the meters like this again.
I I certainly don't feel like we owe him eighteen hundred or two thousand dollars.
No.
So if I can ask a question, Jack, is his house connected to that water also?
It is.
Then he should be charged for two sources.
He told me that he dead-ended the line and it only goes to the house now and not to the shop, but I don't have any proof of that.
Well, he also said he owed him fourteen hundred dollars.
Yeah. Yeah.
I said it's it's up to you.
We'll have him, we'll have him in tomorrow or Thursday and we'll visit with him and and all do an onsite visit. And we'll make plans for as soon as we get done reading water meters, we'll be down there, fix that mess physically so that at least we can. I want in the computer.
Hoping for the snowfalls.
Yeah, it already did.
So I, my question was, is, how much is the council willing to?
I just don't think it's reasonable to, to let go any less than a minimum.
Yeah.
He owes us probably three dollars a month. He paid more than a minimum.
And honestly, I mean, there should be some leverage in the fact you guys are gonna go down there and fix the issue.
Right.
I mean, that was not anything that the town did to fix that problem.
Right, but I could take an ordinance down there that shows him that he's responsible for maintenance on those parks.
Yeah, right.
And he's outside of his own property, so he should be pretty humble.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay, problem solved. Thank you so much.
Sort of small.
Well, there's probably a level. That we haven't found out about.
Yeah. Yeah, and and I don't wanna go beyond our normal needs and set a precedent because somebody else could come along and say, hey.
Yeah, you did this.
My neighbor is doing this on media.
Did anybody here have anything else? Nope, council, do you have anything? Hey, you're in, uh during the meeting at six P M.